To the July 12, 2023 Franklin Board of Education meeting. The meeting has been properly posted. Can we have a roll call, please, Mrs. Larson?
Yes. Dr. Beer?
Here.
Mrs. Witkowski?
Here.
Dr. Connis, excuse us. Mrs. Sapursky?
Here.
Mrs. Yank?
Here.
And Mr. Sprague?
Here.
We are all present.
Thank you. Can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I'm looking for a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved. Second.
Motion was made by Mrs. Witkowski, seconded by Dr. Beer. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Community comment. I have one person signed up for community comment. Does anybody else want to comment? Mrs. Snead, please.
When I come here, it feels weird to sit down. I'm just so used to standing, doing my thing, whatever. So my name is Patricia Snead. If you know me. I wanted to, I actually came last week and had a family issue. I couldn't be here right away at six o'clock. So I wasn't able to get my name in to share. I would like to formally give an apology to you, Annalee. And that's because when I was here in May, I came to share what I'm truly passionate about. And sometimes when you don't write things down, sometimes you end up just talking from, you know, from wherever. And, you know, that's, that's what I do. But I do need to make a formal apology to you, Annalee, because in fact, at that time, I shared something that was secondhand. And sharing that secondhand information wasn't really in the best interest. And I know, thinking about it, as, as people have shared with me, that as you do secondhand information, we all know it's like the telephone game. And information gets shared and then it gets turned wrong. And, and it was wrong of me to do that. And so I did want to share and I did, I definitely wanted to share that with you, Annalee, to let me know that it was wrong to do that. But I do want to, again, reiterate that I came really from my heart. I do truly believe in Franklin. If I didn't, I wouldn't have, I couldn't say I'm on year 34 as a teacher, most of those in Franklin. I, I really love what we are trying to do. And as a member of the union and being a representative of the union, I really want, I'm hoping that we can have a working relationship. And I'm hoping that we can try to do what's best for kids together. And I know that's why all of you are here. That's why I continue to stay. But that's another reason why I've come to make a public apology. Because in me saying and sharing some of the comments that I did two months ago was definitely not a way to try and build up a relationship. It was a wrong way. And it's a way that you could break it down. And so I do want to share that with all of you and just let you know that I really do hope that as one of the union representatives that we can try to have some kind of a strong working relationship because we all are here for the kids. And that ultimately is what it comes down to. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, I'm looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved. Second.
Motion was made by Mrs. Larson, seconded by Mrs. Witkowski. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. School board calendar. Annual meeting of the electors is Wednesday, August 16, 2023, 2023, at the ECC, followed by the regular Board of Education meeting, also here. And regular Board of Education meeting, September 13, 2023, also here. And do we have the date? The date is in August of our?
Yeah, I just noticed it wasn't on there.
Of our retreat is not on here.
August 9, I believe it is.
August 9, Wednesday. Our board retreat will also be here at 6:00.
6:00.
Yep.
6:00. District administrator update. Mrs. Bennon, please.
So we're in the middle of summer, which means that things haven't really actually slowed down. They're speeding up for the next school year, which we already started planning a few months ago. But exciting thing is we have students across the street every day for summer learning. It's been going really well. Our administrators have done a nice job adjusting schedules for elementary and middle school to be there. And we've also, it's been nice to have RightWay on site and start to build that partnership with our new transportation vendor. They've had managers, leaders on site, too, at the beginning, to make sure everything was flowing smoothly. So it's been a really exciting time to be there. There's been a lot of help from people in this building and across the district just to make sure transportation's going smooth, students walking are safe, and everybody's getting where they need to be. But most importantly, the students are really enjoying it. There's some really neat classes that are going on. We're also working on gearing up, in our gearing up saying that we always say, for our first annual leadership summit. I know I've mentioned it a few times. It's coming up August 2 and 3, but I would say that's some of the bigger work that we are working on this summer is our team to finalize those plans, to really bring together our new school improvement teams, new being some of the existing members, but we've added some members at every school, to really have representation from all grades and departments, to really start building that shared voice as we dive into our data and our goals by school for next school year. So you'll hear more about where some of that data wrapped up this year from Dr. Mo tonight. She'll also lead into what our tactics will look like for next year. And then this summit will be our opportunity to have all of those SIT members, about 95 staff members, together to learn together, build team, build that psychological safety, and then start diving into the data and action steps for our next school year. So we're looking forward to that time together, which isn't too far away. Between then and our next board meeting, we have our transition days for 6th grade and 9th grade. We have some really nice numbers, and that's also still open. Families can decide to participate. Those are both around the beginning of August. Our curriculum teams have been busy this summer, working with Mr. Blessington on looking at different priority standards depending on the department. Kind of determines how many hours they may be in this summer, working towards some of that work. So we try to do a little more of that balance in the summer with a lack of subs during the school year, much like those PD days we have during the school year. It's the time that we really get to build professional development for our staff because there's not really that opportunity that we may have had five years ago to get substitutes and pull them from the classroom. So it's been nice to see different use of summer hours for that. Human resources, so Laura and her team are gearing up to bring back or bring in new staff. So they always do a more quick version onboarding here to get them their computers, get them in the system, so that when we come back to New Educator Week, we can really hit the ground running into the work that we're doing. So it's been exciting to welcome some new people. And then, I mean, that's really kind of everything. I was going to say more about summer learning, but that's what's going on. Obviously, activities in sports will start kicking into gear. I think we have band together tonight already. Sports, usually August, if we can make it that far before they're coming in. So it's not, you know, everybody thinks, well, the summer, it's time to breathe, and it is. You breathe a little different, right?
It's different.
But it's just different breathing, right? You're getting ready for everything and getting excited. Getting excited. So, thank you. Any questions? Let me know.
Any big facility projects you're working on?
We'll have that whole report in August, so it'll be a lot of, yeah.
Summer stuff, maybe.
Yep. There is some bigger projects going on. But yeah, we'll have that full facility report in August to go through what some of those are, some roof things, some HVAC.
Every time I go by the high school, something's been done.
Oh, yeah.
Today, it seemed like there was some Arbor work.
Arbor work.
Oh, tree trim.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. Annual academic standards adoptions action item. Mr. Blessington, please.
All right, thank you. Yeah, it's previewed at our June 21 board meeting. As you had as a non-action item, just our annual standards adoption. As you recall, this is things that we've done in the past to prove our, you know, senior action report for, in your board packet, the 4K to 12th grade standards for all of our students, as well as K-12 essential element standards for our students with the most significant cognitive disabilities who engage in the DLM towards alternative achievement standards. Overall, our benchmark standards set high expectations for student learners who work with teachers and administrators. So again, this is an annual approval process that helps us continue our work in teaching and learning. So with that, I'll open up to any questions that you have before you approve these standards.
Linda, please.
So there hasn't been any updates in these standards? And I mean, I think I clicked through all of them, but there hasn't been any revisions in the last year at the state level?
I think the most recent one was ELA or in physical education. So, yeah, they, they run in similar cycles. Every few years, they'll update them.
And I was wondering also, you know, we had this high interest in reading through the state budget process. So is there any disconnecting between these standards and what they're trying to do?
I think those, those things that you're perhaps hearing at the state level around budget, I think, are in support of, like, carrying out the goals of those standards, those ELA reading and writing standards. So I think they're in direct support with hopefully more students meeting those standards at grade level.
Okay. So it's not like it's new, but there's new interest in?
I would say there's a lot of interest in early literacy right now statewide and nationwide right now.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else have questions? All right, then I'm looking for a motion to approve the academic standards as presented.
So moved. Second.
Motion was made by Dr. Beer, seconded by Mrs. Sapursky. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Coherence plan, end of year report. Dr. Mo, please.
Thank you, everybody. I'm going to go into a little bit more depth from the updates you saw in the situation report. So that was a little bit different in years past. We didn't summarize in that report you saw ahead of time. So I'm going to go into a little bit more depth, but please save your questions for the end. Then we're going to do a little pause, and we're going to bring a music update. So this is about a year from the last time we shared the plan for music, and we said we'd come back in a year. So it's part of my coherence plan update, but that was a request from the board to come. So lovely Lindy is here, and we will go through at the end. So we'll pause in between there and then do the music part. So it's connected but not connected, just so you know how it's going to go.
Thank you.
So reminder of our coherence plan. I come three times a year and provide you updates to our metrics. I hope by now, maybe for Mrs. Yank, this is new, but I'm sure you were well versed in it even before becoming a board member. So just for a visual reminder of what's going to be guiding us for the next three years, this goes through 2024. So next year starting will be year three of that coherence plan. We'll be moving forward with building a new coherence plan, likely not brand new, but kind of like we did the refresh. So we're on our last year. Student achievement and growth is the first area that we provide updates around the metrics. So if you, I think, Mrs. Yank, maybe this is more for you. So fortunately and unfortunately, all this data comes to us at different times throughout the year. So forward exam scores were released into the DRC last week, which is kind of the digital platform that houses them, but they're in bargot until October. So the only update I have for you in student achievement is around K-8 math and K-8 reading and student engagement. So if you're new to reading this metrics document, the gold bars mean it's an area that's been updated. So the last time that we met, you can see that there's a gold bar in MAP growth for reading, MAP growth for math, and then the very bottom one, which is student engagement. So long story short, our K-8 reading moved from being in the red to being in the yellow. So that's good news there. Our K-8 math went down slightly from green to yellow. So when we talk about high growth in MAP, MAP is, those of you who have kids have probably heard, but it's a test that adjusts that kids take three times a year. So the growth means, high growth would mean they're making more than the average growth for that band. Long story short, we want all kids to be in high growth, whether you're a very high scorer or a very low scorer. We want you to make more than your expected growth. That's how you would kind of accelerate that and close gaps. No change, which is very interesting in student engagement scores. We are at the exact same number, spring 2023, as we were in spring 2022, of students answering what we call answering favorably, which would be agree or strongly agree on those student engagement questions. So that continues to be in the yellow with no change over the past year, at least when we're looking at that metric. Looking forward to some new things that you will see next year. So a lot of what we do around school improvement planning has to do with our school improvement plan, student achievement area. Those of you doing your board liaison visits may have heard this idea that goal one for everybody has always been student achievement. Goal two has always been closing gaps. And in the past, goal three has been the building's choice based on where they felt like their data or their school needed the most attention. So as a way to kind of bridge, you heard a little bit about the leadership summit to kind of relaunch our school improvement teams as a way to bridge and bring more people on staff into kind of this idea of continuous improvement. Everybody's goal three will be around engagement. So when we talk about engagement, we have those three engagement surveys that are given every year. We have an employee engagement, we have a student engagement, and we have a family engagement. So each school for goal three will develop three teams that include their whole staff to do the work around this engagement. Not that staff wasn't doing that work in the past, but this is a more formalized way to take that metric or take that work from the district level to the school level with the school improvement team and then down into classrooms and teachers. So teachers in buildings will be a part of this work just for that goal three. So when you're out on your visits next year, you'll hear more about that. We're going to kind of use it as a vehicle or a way to model some of those planned-do-study act strategies and a united way across the district and allow our principals to calibrate. In a perfect world, we would have teachers all involved, invested in this work. And I think they absolutely are with the work that they do in the classroom, but unless they are members of the SIT team, they may be felt less connected to that planned-do-study act of the building. So it's kind of taking their work and making it more connected. If that makes sense. Next area is closing gaps. We have no updates since last time. So not that we haven't been doing work, not that we don't have data, but if I'm sticking straight to these metrics that we set out with at the last coherence plan, I'm not able to update you on any of those data sources yet. Pre-ACT has come in, so we have some of the data, but not all, to make a long story short. So that'll have to wait till the next time I come as well. We're hoping that most of that is, is unembargoed, the word? I think so. Released from embargo or unembargoed by the next time we come, and then those metrics should update. When we're talking about closing gaps, just to preview that, the work we're going to do there, I know I talked last time, we talked about these data literacy protocols or helping principals and SIT team members. We had data upon data upon data, more data than any human being could ever want, but we had a select group of people looking at that data. And again, I always use the, kind of the analogy of smushing that pyramid down. So how are we getting people to use that through the system? Some work that we've done is learning how to code qualitative responses. So something that's going to be new, we started it in the spring, is there's a question, for instance, on the employee engagement survey that says, do you feel like you have the tools and resources to do your job? And for the first time this spring, if you answered strongly disagree, I don't have the tools to do my job, a text pop, text box popped up and said, what tools do you need? We can then take all that data, code it, and be like, okay, I hear what you all are saying. You said you needed better computers. Sorry, Luanne, if you're out there, that's just the example that popped in my head, right? Better training on computers. Now we can make a clear action step and start to not only fix things, maybe that aren't working as well as we want, but to make people feel like those surveys are a vehicle for them to be heard and understand and what are those big themes. We've also talked about different reports and things that we're using on the SIT team. We're still working on root cause analysis and still working on that edis. So those are things that we introduced last year. You will see them repeated as we move into next year, just to kind of preview that for you. Employee engagement. So we have one updated metric, but not the other. We did give, our first metric is the employee engagement survey. I kind of just use that example. Again, that stayed the same. So we are still in the red. I guess that's good news and bad news. I think it's been a rough year for hiring and teachers and just jobs. I think we've talked about that across every place. Our employees answered roughly about the same overall. I have a couple of slides here to show you some details about that. And we agreed last year, I'm not sure if you remembered, but we changed that staff retention metric more to an apples-to-apples and said we would report that in October because then we have the people who have stayed through September and come back instead of picking a time now where retention is like this. There's lots of movement. So we will update that retention rate in October when, that's what we decided last time. I'm not sure if you remember that we'd run that October-to-October, more of an apples-to-apples metric. I wanted to give you an example of the level of detail that we get in these questions and how we're working with our principal team and our district team to use this data in a more actionable way. So I gave you the example of tools and resources and pulling those out. This would be an example. So here's the highest three scoring questions across the district on that employee engagement survey. The three questions, district-wide, all employees, so that includes food service, custodians, teachers, EAs, this is open to everybody. And then there's a summary of that the last three years. So we can kind of look, like, there's some things, we tend to be really strong in teaming. So our teachers feel like they work on a team that supports them. You can see that we went down a little bit in that middle one, my teammates have my back, which used to be our highest scoring one. That's, the bar graph is a summary of the last three years. So to give you an idea how we look and use that data, this is what we kind of have to do. So you have high-level data, middle-level data, and then each principal for their building gets their own building data. And that's what drives that school improvement planning process. I think it's been a goal of ours at the district level to take these really fancy shiny platforms and make them usable, trying to give you an idea of maybe what that looks like, more actionable. It doesn't do a whole lot of good to say 87% of people answered favorably. That doesn't help us make an action step. So same idea, and these happen to be the three lowest scoring questions. So just to give you an idea of the level of data that we get, over the last three years, some of them have gone down on a pretty significant decline. So our building teams, our principals, our building leadership teams would take a look at that and say, okay, this has either been a consistent trend or a growing trend. People are not going to want to continue to give input and take these surveys unless we really can make a tangible commitment to some of these things and know that they're heard and hear some action steps. So you will hear a lot next year about what we're calling this theory of action with these surveys. To do a better job in the Franklin find of sharing, Ben Franklin is working on this. Let's showcase what Ben Franklin's employee engagement team is doing and their action steps and how that's going. I don't think we've done as good of a job as we could to push out the actions, not that the actions weren't happening, but to make them visible for people. So you will hear a lot about that moving forward. In the good news category, so you've heard a lot about Gear Up Professional Development. So we took survey, this is a place in addition to that employee engagement survey, a metric that we added. It likely will be added as a new metric on the new improvement, new coherence plan. But we changed the whole process of professional development days this year. You've heard some about that. And every session, everything that everybody did during the day was ranked or scored on three items. The alignment to the coherence plan, so you see the bar labeled alignment. Personal growth, which would be teachers setting what we call PPGs. You've heard that acronym about what they want to get better at. And then tangible takeaways, things I can go to my classroom. So our overall scores for all the sessions of all the PD days, of all the years, of all the time, is 4.2 out of 5. So for, we feel pretty good that that's where we are. Not that there's room to grow, but that goes into a very high level of detail. There's some tweaks we can make, but it was a huge shift. We've gotten good feedback about it, and we've also gotten people that, I think, feel more comfortable giving constructive feedback, like, I would really like it if you would try this, or I really know someone who could lead this. So we've kind of, just kind of cracked that open. I'm really excited for next year. Family community engagement. So we have updated metrics in all three, and we moved all three into the green. So everything went up. Everything is good. We're really happy. The net promoter score was always in the green, but those first two were in the yellow the first time we gave the survey last year. So there is family and partnership, family partnership and learning questions and communication questions, if you remember that, kind of on that. They were both in the yellow when we started. We set the metric last year, and you can see at the bottom that both of those went up. The one thing that went down is our response rate, which is curious. Response rates are always curious if you work in surveying. So without getting too far into the weeds, there is some authentication that goes into people having to enter their child's ID number and birth date. We're looking at ways to authenticate it. I'm going to be honest, like, I probably wouldn't know my own kid's ID if it pulled up. So is there a way we can authenticate it for the confidentiality pieces and not have, what we noticed is of those 849, the difference between 849 and 1164, many people went in and opened the survey but were guessing. Perhaps when it called for a level of data that they didn't have off the top of their head, their kid's ID number, they closed it and didn't finish it. So you can see how many people opened it and how many people didn't complete it. So that's good data to have, trying to protect people's confidentiality, but at the same time being reasonable that of the team of people that was looking at this, none of us could rattle off our own kids' student ID numbers. If you can, congratulations, because we couldn't in our, in our, in our group. So hoping to raise that, we would like more, it's a response per kid, not per family. So that number is rather low, if I'm being, we have really good scores of the people who answered, but we'd like to get more. Moving forward next year, some things that we're going to be doing, I don't know if you've noticed, but if you've been in schools, we added translation stations in every main office, so an automatic way to translate to any language, text to speech, speech to text, doing some more training around that. The word is out that we bring community partners in for Gear Up Day. So I've had now two places reach out saying, I heard you feature people. Can we come and share? So Kayla's Playground, for instance, if you're familiar, I've been working with her. She's going to come and do a session. So it's like when you feel really good, when you're not asking people and they're asking to come in and connect with the school. So you'll see that. We've worked hard on senior exit surveys to build a database. So once seniors leave us, unless they happen to leave their contact info, we have no way to hear from them, to share their good fortune. And the data would tell you that one of the best ways to keep teachers and make them feel good, I'm sure you know, you run into a former student in the grocery store and they said, I remember when you taught me triple-digit addition and I loved your project on. That is the most reinforcing thing you can give to a teacher. So how can we capture that and push it down into the system? We're working on that for next year. We'll be adding, if you guys have ever seen on a website, the little tab on the corner, the help tab that pops out. There's a little, sometimes there's a little funny cartoon or something. I'm not sure who's going to be the cartoon for the Franklin pop-out, but there will be a help tab. So if people can't find what they're looking for on our website, there will be a, what we call a monitored email, trying to get those people that we still haven't gotten in. So excited about that stuff. I feel really good, not only about the metrics, but just kind of some of the momentum that's happening with family and community. Just a review of net promoter score. So one thing that you'll hear a lot about is what we call NPS or net promoter. So there's a question on every survey that says, on a scale of 1 to 10, how likely are you to recommend Franklin Public Schools? Seems like kind of an innocuous question, but there's actually a lot of research that goes into why people answer the way they do. I'm going to say, I learned, like, I would never answer a 10, even if I loved the place. I'm not sure why. Now I've learned about this, like, the nine, the people who answer nines and tens are the people that are most willing to go out and promote the place. So there's a lot of research. This is the go-to metric for surveys. We've added that metric across all our surveys. So we are now collecting a net promoter score for students, family, and employee, trying to get kind of that one number barometer on the health of the district. So you'll hear about that moving forward. Fiscal stewardship. So thank you, Mrs. Witkowski. This is one, we were, we did not make any updates originally to this metric. So what you have listed in your situation report still has budget in yellow. We were just going to hold on this until the budget's completed, update you next time. But being in yellow is probably misleading because we are truly in the green in that in the green in that section. So that one, we switched to green. Mr. Cromer and Mrs. Witkowski had a conversation. So you'll see that your situation report is different from what I'm showing you here, but we have updated because we are in the green for that budget metric. Mr. Cromer and I have talked, these likely won't be the metrics that we think would give the best picture of some of the details. They may be different when we move into the next coherence plan, but it's not really playing fair if you change the metrics halfway through your plan. So we'll stick through these to the end of the plan. Last part. So you hear about this idea of annual tactics, right? Those are, the coherence plan doesn't change, but the tactics do. So you can see in the blue on the right, based on the work we've done, these will be the tactics that will be moving into next year. This will guide all of our work. This will guide the work that the coaches do. This will guide the work that school improvement teams do. Not anything earth-shattering, but there's an infinite amount of things that you could pick to work on. So it's more important than you might think about where are you going to focus and where are you going to make sure all the gears in the system are moving forward. So you'll hear a lot more about these as we move into next year. This is just kind of a preview. It will be on the pretty paper with the gold stripes as soon as they're out of draft form. So when we kick off the new school year with teachers, you remember that document with the gold on the bottom, those will be converted into gold. Right now, they are in draft form. That is the coherence plan update in a nutshell. I'm going to pause here and take questions on that before I invite Ms. Rinders up. So can I answer any questions or clarify anything?
Can you, I see the previous slide?
Yes.
EMLSS.
So I spelled it out in your situation report. I ran out of room on the slide and I didn't have the heart to make the font any smaller. So we used to call it RTI, response to intervention. The term that you knew is now the E is equitable, M is, M and L is multi-level, SS is system of support. So equitable, multi-level system of supports. Basically, that means enrichment for kids who need to be pushed ahead, intervention for kids who need some gaps filled. So if there's thinking about the kids in your class, you have some kids that are right on grade level doing exactly, some that are way above, some of that are well below, we're responsible for hitting them all.
And PDSA?
Plan, do, study, act. Yep, continuous improvement, kind of the framework to do that. Great question.
And these came from what process? How did you come up with the new one?
It's a great idea. So we talked about, and I had the picture and took it out, we did kind of an inventory. So I think we've done it with this group where you place the dot stickers next to the places. So we went through and we asked our principals, list all the things we say that you're trying, we're trying to do right now. So everybody ran around chart paper and listed those things. We put them together in groups, then everybody got dots and says, what do you think that we should focus on the most? So the first three came from that. The last one, family partnerships with internal and external stakeholders is one we chose to continue at the district level. So that's not one, right, wrong, or otherwise, that our principals picked. We feel pretty good about parent engagement, family engagement, our metrics show that. But I don't think we'd have had a full comprehensive plan if we weren't continuing to work on that and making it better. We didn't want to take that off, for lack of a better word, as a focus.
You may recall seeing those pictures too, when we looked at my evaluation, we had, I had the posters in there that Jess is referring to. So it started with the whole administrative team in February, having a retreat, working through that, and then bringing in our coaches and like drilling down kind of into what does that mean? What does it look like in Markham, Monroe?
And then the EMLSS, there are already, I mean, we already have RTI, right? I mean, that's, you're not implementing a new thing to call it?
Correct, new name.
So.
EMLSS is RTI, for lack of a better, correct?
So what's different about this tactic then?
Well, RTI wasn't a tactic last year. So specifically looking at interventions and enrichments and how they fit into the system, not that we weren't working on it. But EMLSS would give you the idea that kids move up and down, different levels of instructional needs at different times. So you might be enriched in social studies and behind in math, and that might change throughout the year. So EMLSS is a way to say that that universal instruction, right? What we have to do is your first goal that everybody gets, but then you need what I would call a nimble system to move kids up and down. So that's helping teachers learn how to do small groups. That's helping students who need enrichment doing projects for gifted and talented, talented and gifted. All of that falls into these levels, whereas I think RTI was more narrow. You're behind in math, go get helps with your multiplication facts, and then come back. Whereas this is kids moving up and down. That's how I would describe the difference, kind of a philosophical difference, but essentially the same thing.
Are we more able to do that more nimbly now because of things like edis and?
I certainly hope so, yes, at that, and that teachers have that data in real time. So teacher teams, we don't need to send a kid out to quote, be tested. We have that day-to-day right at our fingertips. We have teachers that work together in groups. So maybe you all are a team, and during math time, you each take a small group. And remember during COVID, we weren't even allowed to mix classrooms. So we're moving back in where there's some ability to move and do larger groups, smaller groups, that sort of thing. So I hope so. Doesn't mean that having good data makes it perfect, but I think it helps. So I agree with that.
Hannah, I thought you had your hand raised before.
Do you have a question about this? Because I was gonna go to something else.
I'm gonna do something different too.
Okay.
You want to tell me where to click?
I was just gonna go back to your survey and your response rate, when you were talking about who in the room can think of their students' numbers.
Yes.
I'll tell you, I can do all three of mine if you're ready.
Wow. You probably answered, you're one of those 849.
I definitely did, for three, well, no, two kids. But anyway, my, my question though is, if a parent has to put in their student's ID number, is it, is it stopping them because they don't know their student's ID number, or is it stopping them because they don't want to be identified? If they're about to give a critique to the school, they don't want to do that if they think they can be like tracked back?
Yeah, the identification number is a way to say that only a person with a student in Franklin is being able to answer. So let's say we put out that link and somebody put it on Facebook and said, everybody in Wisconsin, answer Franklin's. I don't believe that people are out to do that, but in theory, if you weren't authenticating, who could give a response? You could. The other thing that could happen is you could reply to the survey 8,000 times, because it's not one response per kid. So that, whether or not somebody would take the time to do that is hard to tell.
But so in your communication with families about it, I'm just thinking as an employee who has filled out those surveys, I'm not as likely to fill it out or fill it out honestly if I think there's any way that a critique I might have is going to get back to my manager and they're, you know what I mean? So as a parent in the district, is there, is there communication that you could do about, it truly is anonymous, we're using this information only to make sure that Joe will?
It's a good point. Maybe they're not understanding the reason for, I, it's a fancy word.
I'm not afraid to tell you what I think, so I filled out, I filled out the survey.
But it's fair.
It could be that maybe that's part of what's holding people back, is not their lack of what is my kid's number, but my, I don't want to tell you honestly what I think if you're going to track down my kid and.
Explaining why we need to, just so you don't answer 1,000 times, or what?
Right.
Okay, I like that.
That was just what.
And if it didn't come through as clear, we could have been wrong about our assumptions. Maybe that was just me not knowing my kids' numbers, but that people were like, huh, I'm not sure I, they're gonna know it's me. That was more their.
I hate to be so like pessimistic about it, but I just, I feel like some people might not have, you know, like, ooh, I don't want to fill out the survey because I don't want them to know that I think X, Y, or Z. That need for anonymity.
So you're saying that we know that they got to that point, right?
You can tell, so how many times the survey was opened was far more than how many times the survey was completed. So people clicked on it and looked at it, but then didn't do it.
Could you have a pop-up then, yeah, give them a chance to say why I don't, why I'm not going to fill it out? Or, I mean, they obviously clicked on it, but they could.
You could, yeah. I like that, but maybe explaining it, I wrote that down. And it's curious why people were okay with doing it last year, but weren't okay with doing it this year.
Is it the exact same method?
Exact same, nothing changed.
I don't know. But how many more did you last year?
We had 1164 last year and 849 this year.
Oh, okay. I thought that was the difference between how many.
No.
No, okay.
Just curious, like, why, no, it was the exact same, nothing changed. But that's a good thought, helping people understand.
Did you give it at the exact same time of year? It came out, okay.
Well, I shouldn't say that. Last year, it came out the week after school let out. This, and we thought, we thought the 1164 was too bold. So this year, we put it in the last week of school, thinking people would still be in school mindset on that list.
Well, there you go. That's your problem.
That's, yep.
100%. Yeah.
She did, we guessed wrong.
There's, there's never a perfect time for a survey, but the last week of school.
Mm-hmm.
Andrew, go ahead.
So all this talk of the word nimble, I'm just wondering, looking at the KPIs that we get, and I would, I would like to challenge you with the next iteration of the coherence plan. I would love it if we had more frequent updates. It can be so disheartening to get here and basically see that only half of the KPIs that we're tracking change from your three times between your thrice yearly presentations. I don't know what those metrics might look like, but I question how useful they are to us and then by extension to you.
We are in full agreement with that.
Okay, great.
In a perfect world, it would kind of be almost like an updating dashboard, right? That's how I monitor them with all these data points. The data points that were selected here are pretty finite, come at a certain time. So yes, we are in agreement there.
Okay. And then my only other big one is, just sort of going back to student achievement on the KPIs, like, that's the most important thing. And we have ELA proficiency in the red. We have math proficiency in the red. And I don't know how else to say it, like, that's just not good enough. I'm not trying to be like Negative Nellie, but we've got to do better. And I don't know if it's going to take a, like a more, as opposed to nipping at the edges of things to try and shift things, or if we have to approach this bigger. But people send their kids to school trusting that they're going to be able to read well by the time they get out. And so that's just, that's just really disheartening to me. And dare I say, not acceptable.
Well, I mean, when you think about it, you know, it's in the red, but yet to go from red to green, even in the greens, you're saying that reading is 53% are?
Yeah, I would say that that's not even high enough.
And, right, so, I mean, we've been seeing this for years. It's just, I think it's, people think.
I just want to remind us that it's not okay.
It's fair. I don't think any of us, I would say that ELA has been our biggest focus of work this year. You have known some of the work. I'm not saying that that's going to fix things. I can say that, yes, I've peaked at embargoed data, so I look forward to our next data update.
Oh, that's, well, that's.
But again, okay, so we moved to yellow. You still have this many more. So that's not to.
I guess the reason I say it is so that, like, if you're ever like, oh, at least for me as a board member, you're hearing from me, you have my support if you want to make some changes. I don't know about the rest of you, but it's not okay.
Maybe you start to wonder if the 53%, if that data is really telling you, because we're graduating people and they're going to college, and where's?
Remember, for that 53%, though, and this is not to split hairs, but if we're using that, that would be students who are high-growth. Right? If you want to look at a summative, you would want to look at that math, 65% or above, that would be like a proficiency score. So same thing, 65 is lower, you would, we would hope that more than 65% of kids are proficient in math, same argument.
I don't know. Do any of the rest of you have any thoughts on that, or do you think I'm just being a goofball?
I don't think you're being a goofball.
And both things can be true.
Yeah. I don't think you're being a goofball. I think we always, we want to continue to get better. We also need to get better at assessing what the rates we are, you know, we assess these rates for this time based on what they were last time. And, you know, these things continue to be confusing to me, and I'm sure everybody, in terms of, okay, it's the high-growth rate in math, was, how many had the high-growth rate and how many? Is that really the best, is that really the best way to measure how we're doing as a school district? And I think that's something we have to look at, you know. But, but we also, we need to do better as well.
This is the thing.
And, you know, every one of us would agree that we need to do better, I hope.
I mean, we want the work to move the needle, right?
Right, right.
That's what we want to happen. And, you know, I've been in the board 15 years and it's always been, our kids are half, half, low percentages are achieving proficiency. And, but yet they go to college and we are a high-performing district, like one of the highest performing districts. And this is what our data looks like. So where's the disconnect?
Well, I think it is important to make sure that we are talking, you know, you were talking before, apples to apples, like, some of these numbers that we're seeing on that chart are growth numbers, some of them proficiency numbers. So, I mean, it's, we have so many different data points here, just being really clear and transparent about what it is that we're looking at and, you know, what are we, you know, how are we changing those things? Like, you know, what you just said, the 53%, it's not that 53%, like, only 53% of our kids can read. That's, that particular one happens to be in the high-growth. So I just think there's so many different data points, we have to make sure we're looking at the right ones, and then certainly using the right tools and tactics and things to move those in the right direction.
I would say that you can anticipate the metrics looking different in the next iteration of the coherence plan.
And I hope it's so that we're actually measuring what we want to measure and not to sort of.
I wouldn't even say different, that these are the wrong metrics, but for sure different in the format in which it's shared with you. Because I would agree that this format that we kind of started the coherence plan with is rather confusing, even for, like, we have to think about it and that the data comes at different times. It should be a simple visual to look at. So the two things combined, yeah.
I like the idea of a roving, or a dashboard that's always available, even if it's not, not all of these numbers that are immediately available, or if you had to search for the high-growth numbers, that would be fine. You know, we want, at, at a minimum, we want somebody to be, a parent to be able to go on and say, I'm thinking about where to, where to move. Do I want, you know, 65% of kids are proficient in Franklin and that number's this in Oak Creek? So where do I want to move? Or, you know, it's easier to, it's easier to see. Whereas if you just have a red, green, and, you know, those numbers could be different in Oak Creek and there in Franklin, well, theirs could be green, ours could be red, and ours could be better. So.
Well, I look forward to being your liaison.
I also just think it's important that, you know, when we're looking at the numbers, that we're also staying true to what are the tactics we're using and how are we supporting the staff in terms of, you know, yeah, okay, we want our students to do better, but how are we helping? Like, what are we putting in place to help our staff to help our students? So it's not just, why isn't the kid taking the test while it's, you know, everything else, everything else that goes into that. It's not just about these numbers, it's the whole student.
When you do your summit, will you have the data you don't have now? Will they have access to the data you're not sharing with us now?
We have a lot of other data sources that we use that are not on these metrics. If I'm being honest with you, these are the metrics that were selected, but there's a lot of different, what we talked about, remember I said edis? So we, I could show you a million different, not a million, but I could show you other data points that maybe would tell our story. I'm not trying to say they would look worlds better, but would likely be more understandable and more applicable to understanding our situation.
But these metrics are what really go into state report card, though.
Forward exam is, forward exam and ACT, MAP has no bearing on state report card. So forward exam and ACT are the two biggies for state report card.
Probably why they were putting them in.
Well, it's, most of this is lagging data, which is much of what we're saying, right? We can't let it go because it's embargoed. And so when we can update that coherence plan, we can have more up-to-date data. But to your point, when we have the summit, they will have access to the regular, like, universal screeners, our maps, but then also how are we screening and looking at students that are maybe in some of those interventions, and having those deeper conversations that, to your point, get more to what are the needs of the students, what does our staff need to be able to get there? They're not just looking at the more lagging data, which is forward exam and ACT and some of that.
And you're using internally the embargoed data to?
Correct, I can see the embargoed data.
Right.
That's one of her main job perks.
Right.
Your superpower.
She's checked New Berlin, that is enough.
And actually, parents will get individual student reports. The part that's embargoed are those larger proficiency scores that will go to feed the state report card. So it becomes unembargoed after it's fed the state report card. So you see those two things kind of go together. They can no longer embargo it when it's used to drive the state report, right? So that usually happens before the next time we have an update. So, yeah, but that, even the individual score reports were just, that was, that's very new data. Which, and they took the test four months ago. So how much good even does it do in that form? Not a lot.
And accessibility to how you're performing compared to other districts, which is a good metric to look at, too. You don't see any of that until it's all embargoed or released from embargo.
Unembargoed, we're going to go with unembargoed.
So we can't look at that yet. To know, right, like, if these numbers, your point, like, we want to be better than this, or at least doing better than our neighbors, and then even performing higher. then even performing higher than that, it gives you some calibration that way, but you don't see that until that time period, October, November either.
I guess I don't want to see too much of this comparing to other districts. I mean, every kid in the state should have access to a good education. This competing, competing with other districts, you know, gets, can be done, can go overboard.
Yeah. No, I agree. Every kid deserves the best education, hundred percent. The, the comparing is more calibration. Like, are we not growing as much? Is there something somebody else is doing differently that we could do better or vice versa? That's really what it is looking at. Kind of like we look at classrooms too, like my students are performing better on this assessment we have, and I'm coming together with my other math teachers at a PLC, we should talk about like, what did I do different instructing in my classroom that maybe you didn't that I could help you with? That's what you're really looking at across schools, like what calibrating to look like? Is someone growing faster? What are they doing? That kind of piece. I agree though, a hundred percent. Every kid should have the best education.
But if AlGoma cracks the code.
We're going to AlGoma, we're figuring out what they're doing.
No, it just came to mind. Thank you.
So I just want to say how great it sounds that these teacher surveys are now, I mean, I assume that they're, they had some kind of effect, but it sounds like it's gonna be even more so when things pop up and.
We're hoping, yeah.
Has to be, has to be, you know, yeah, if you took a survey and you, you said things were bad and nobody ever got back to you, nothing ever was addressed. So it sounds like that's, you know, I'm just very encouraged to hear that piece of it. And then this family and community engagement, it's family survey, family survey, family survey. What's the community engagement part?
It's a good question. So when this coherence plan first started, they had, this is a metric that was changed. I broke my own rules. So you remember, in the first coherence plan, they had a community metric and it was so high, the first time they measured it, they just discontinued the goal. If you, not, not they in a bad way, the, the, right, that they, they far exceeded the goal on the first measurement. So they kind of sunsetted the community measure. We've, Mr. Kafka and I have bounced around. Do you have one of those things where rate how I'm doing and it's updating all the time? We have key communicators as a venue. We have not replaced that community metric. So that will be something we'll get input in for the next coherence plan. It was sunsetted. There's those constant kind of those, how am I doing? That, a lot of people use those where you can click on them anytime. That's a pretty typical metric. Is that the, where we get our best information? Maybe, maybe not. I would say likely we would get better information from other sources. So maybe it's a balance. You have that kind of number quantitative metric, but then we're leaning on key communicators and these individuals that are coming to gear up sessions and adding that qualitative piece. So it was there. You're exactly right. It's gone. It was sunsetted because it was so high is what my understanding was, the way that they were measuring.
Because the reason for my asking, when I was running, I heard somebody say, oh, when I ran for office, I told my neighbor, you know, I was running for school board and they're like, I don't just want to hear from you when you're asking me to fork over for a referendum, you know? So it's like, I think we want, I, I really want to be, make sure that we are, you know, asking people in the, you know, the people who vote for us, the people who are gonna be paying the, the referendums and the, you know, tax levies and stuff to elicit their opinions. Not that, you know, some, some, everyone's gonna have an opinion about the school district, but we just don't want to come to them when it's referendum time and no other time are we eliciting anything from them. So I don't know what community means. Does it mean the folks in the senior home? Or does it mean, I don't know what community even.
All of the above, right? We, we think of internal stakeholders as staff, students, sometimes parents, external would be community, police, fire, mental health partners, anybody kind of outside of this, the, what we call brick and mortar. We use that term. But many, many people and anybody who lives in the community, right? Anyone who lives in the county, people could argue.
Right. Well, they have a vested interest in a good school system because it affects their, their property values and their ability to sell their home and all that kind of stuff.
Correct.
You know?
Yeah, you're spot on. And thank you for noticing it's not there. I don't have a real good excuse as to why it's not there, except it was sunsetted and in the next iteration, we have to figure out a way to bring it back, but with more usable data, not just, it's so good, we don't need to have it, right? That was a good problem to have, but that's not accomplishing what you just described, no.
And I just have one more quick question. So we had a neighbor move in across the street. She has two little kids and, and she's like, yeah, my husband moved because of his job. It sounds like they could have lived in, in many communities and they chose Franklin because of the schools. And she said, they're going to Robinwood. And she said, yeah, there's really good stuff written about Robinwood. And you said about the people who answer the nines and the tens, you know, are the ones who are willing to go to bat. I mean, do, is there a public, I know there's a, a public way to look at the schools and how they're graded. And sometimes I look at them and, and there's no, been no comment for like two years. And then it's kind of a mediocre comment. Could we encourage people in some forum, public forum to say, hey, my kid got a great educa-, because I, I'd be willing to do that and I haven't, and I'm kind of a hypocrite, you know, because my kids had great educations. And I just wonder, hey, you checked nine or 10 here, you know, can you put this on a public?
Are you talking about like a greatschools.org site or?
Yeah.
Probably something like that.
This, okay.
Yeah. Yeah. Or even, I don't know. Does each school have?
Like, we're talking about a text box pops up, right? Or you're talking if someone answers a nine or a 10. The one piece of data that we didn't collect, because I, I was trying to scale this down a little bit, is now there is a comment, every time you give a net promoter score, whether you answered in the high, what we call the neutral or the low, it says, why did you score this way? So we have a running list of three comments, three columns, that you put in the score, it clicks out a text box. So we have that now for parents, students and community. We, excuse me, parents, students and staff. We shared that. So every principal has that for their building. And that themed out data is gonna be used to drive, we spoke about those engagement groups, you know, here, here's the reasons why they said it's really high, here's the reasons why they said. So we took a first step, but not to connect it to the community piece like you described or more publicly. That's still pretty internal. So that gives me something good to think about. Are we ready to move on? Could I call the lovely Ms. Rinders up?
Please.
So I'm gonna click through, I just want to remind you again. So a year ago, we were here. We did some important work with the music department. I cannot thank our Ms. Rinders enough. She kind of took that over and owned it and loved it. We made these structural changes. And I'm sure you all know, there's nothing better than having full trust in somebody to just do something in the way in which you, you want it to be done. So I have that luxury with this, what we're gonna talk about, these changes that we made to music professional development that, that Lindy was able to lead. So we invite her to come and share.
Can you maybe pull it in a little bit?
No, I project.
Say, it does sound like it's on.
All right.
So you probably, and I know Mary wasn't here last year this time, but she is a music parent, so she understands some of what you're going through. So about a year ago, we came together and I wasn't able to be here, but we talked a little bit about what's going to be happening in music this past year. We focused on three areas for our action steps. You'll see there's four up here and I'll speak a little bit more to that. The three that we really talked about last summer was the co-teaching, training and support, the performance ensemble exposure plan, and then also the career pathways, the thread that they have at the high school. On top of that, we have a content specific professional development, which kind of came in a little bit later as I worked with Mr. Blessington. Right away at the beginning of the year, last year, Dr. Mo brought together the music staff in a pre-session and delivered models on co-teaching so that they would have a much better understanding of all the different ways to co-teach. That was something they felt that they were lacking and came out of our studies previous year. Following that presentation, every PD day between August and then toward the spring and April, we finally met, they were given at least an hour and a half of time during those PD days to do the same thing that we were talking about earlier, that plan, do, study, act kind of system, where they would look at what they used as a model, talk about how that worked with the kids and if it fulfilled the students' needs, and then went on to either choose another model to experiment with for the next month or so before we met, or using that same model and tweaking it to make sure it was being used the best way possible. And so that really helped them to reflect and choose which models worked best when they were co-teaching between sixth grade and 12th grade. And just so you know, I'm not sure how many of you know this, but both orchestra and band do co-teaching between sixth grade and 12th grade. So there are two teachers that are working, or sometimes three, working with the students at the same time during the courses for band. After that, this is that content specific part I was talking about. So in further discussion, the music staff really felt that we needed more content specific professional development. So with, along with our PD days that we were working on our performance exposure plan and then also co-planning and talking about career thread, we also wanted to go dig deeper into music teaching and music education and what that means through our curriculum and how we prepare lessons. And the way we did that was using methodology that's been in Wisconsin and throughout the United States for a while called comprehensive musicianship through performance. It's something some of us have had training in before, felt passionately about. And Allison from Haver, who's our high school band director, who is at marching band tonight, did a really wonderful job of leading us through that kind of procedure and getting, acquiring more knowledge as a whole K-12 department. So we purchased the book for anyone who wasn't familiar with it. And throughout the year, then about forty-five minutes to an hour on those professional development days, we worked through in teams the chapters of the book and applied that to some of our learnings that you're working on with the kids in our curriculum. And so what we're trying to do with that is update our curriculum in a way that fulfills our students' needs, but also works along with what we're currently doing in Franklin with the understanding by design, making sure that it has assessment and strategies and outcomes. It works very well together with what we're doing. This is probably the most visual and visible of all the action steps. And this was our performance ensemble exposure plan. So several years ago, we decided to start band orchestra and choir at sixth grade. We soon discovered that the elementary students missed out on understanding what those performance ensembles are. And unless they have an older sibling, they wouldn't really understand what band choir, what orchestra really means. So we were very intentional in making sure we put together a performance plan kindergarten through 12th grade, where we really educate the students at a young age of what it means to be in band orchestra and choir through intentional teachings and changing in the way we presented at the elementary. So the music staff at the elementary made sure that we were talking more about that when we were mentioning instruments or listening to recordings or singing a certain song. We would make more, more reference to choir and what that means. Same with band and orchestra. And then we also implemented an ensemble tour. So what we ended up doing this past year, we brought in the jazz ensemble. And for one day throughout the year, it was in January this year, our jazz ensemble traveled to every elementary school, presented for about twenty-five minutes of small performance, gave the kids an idea of what that means. And then the idea next year that it will be orchestra this upcoming year and follow new choir. So by the time they're done, and this is four K all the way to fifth, they've seen that rotation and pattern several experiences if they don't have an older sibling or if they don't put a choir, band and orchestra on, it's outside of the school. And that was very well received. Also, we changed a little bit about how we present our music choice to the kids. We're very intentional about making sure they have a clear understanding of what it means to be in band compared to general music, which they only experience at the elementary, what it's like to be in choir, and then what it's like to be in orchestra as best we can through videos from the high school and middle school. And also through field trips, we've gone to Milwaukee Symphony Orchestra, made reference to that. So we're trying to integrate and spread that as much as possible. And then also the last step that we really did was our instrument fitting. With our instrument fitting in years past, what had happened is all the band orchestra teachers would come to the elementaries during the school day. And we found that this time, of course, COVID changed a lot of that. But then we also were missing that family part of it. So this year, for the first time, we had an evening event two nights in a row. Families were encouraged to sign their child up if they were enrolled in band or orchestra, to come out and try instruments, talk to some parents who are already part of our own wonderful parent support group, and also get to know some of the band and orchestra teachers. And that was a very successful event. We had a lot of response. We surveyed all of, of these events. So that's how I know it's very successful. We got some positive feedback. So along with that, I think, yeah, we're gonna kind of go into that last slide. So as we have been working forward in these action steps this year, every single time we did an event, we did have some kind of survey or some kind of metric that we would study to see what the impact was and what we can do differently if we want to continue with that same idea for next year, what we want to tweak it and make it better, completely go on a different track. And we, the informants, the instrument fitting, fifth grade choice, we're going to continue with those because they have been very successful. And just make sure we tweak them to become stronger. And then moving forward, at the end of this school year, we surveyed every child who's staying in music and every child who has exited music from sixth grade to 11th grade to find out why. And many of the same topics that you were talking about, if it said, I'm leaving, you would say, why are you leaving? And ask them to fill in a text box. If they were staying, we're asked why they were staying. One of the things that we discovered is that at the high school level, kids really feel they're part of the group and part of a culture. And in the middle school level, you didn't see any of those kinds of answers. So already we know going into next year, how can we create a culture in the middle school that makes them want to stay and be part of these ensembles and feel like they're part of a team? They feel that way in the high school, but we're not seeing that in our surveys in the middle. So we're already starting to plan how we're going to take action steps for next year based on those cases to raise in the next school year. And as for that pathway, the career pathway, but after we all got together as a K-12, we felt like we needed more information both from Mr. Bolo and how that all works from the high school, and then also from our students, if they, what they need as a career in music. This year, we discovered after this year, the time is really right for us to move forward. There are so many students who are going into music as a career, or not even as a career, but as music post, post Franklin education. They are staying in community bands or they're enrolled in some kind of organization and are performing music after the graduate. So we want to keep that going. So we're going to really be digging more into that.
If you don't mind, I was just gonna share, I have one more slide that I wanted to add. So this connection piece, so the way we accomplish this, right? You can't, there's not more than 24 hours in a day, is when you think about the mornings of our PD days, we have roughly two hours spent in curriculum teams and two hours where those teachers made those gear up choices. So what we did for music is they had their two hours in their curriculum team, but instead of making gear up choices, the K-12 music team opted for the choice to be a longer chunk of four hours every PD day. So that's where this time came from. And so I just wanted to take a moment, you know, to recognize the work that, that Lindy and the team did, but also, so this is just an example, those were some of our highest ratings of the PD day that the teachers felt like that was a good use of time, successful, met their needs, responsive. So again, when we're moving to this model of give people what they need, this was kind of the first time we tried something a little different for a group and, and worked through it. They got very high scores in those, the, the three columns are the three areas, the alignment, personal growth, tangible takeaways. It was one of our most highly rated sessions throughout the PD day. We also collect comments from people. So the ability to have this uninterrupted time from, I don't have to read it to you, but people also, you know, not everybody comments on the survey, but every time, comments would come through about that music time and just appreciating that we gave it. So it was the first time, you know, that, that risk to do something a little different, but I think in this case, it was a structure to accomplish the, the time and the responsiveness needed. So that was just my part. So I'm sure that Lindy would be happy to answer questions, but I just wanted to thank her again. That's a big undertaking to plan that time and, and be responsive. And it was very well received. So we're happy with that.
I guess I'll make one comment because you mentioned about, there seems to be a high interest.
high interest in, well, based on your survey, but I'm involved with our church, and we're trying to hire a music person, and it's been very difficult. And someone made the comment that STEM is killing the arts in the colleges. There's just so much focus on STEM that no one's paying attention to the arts. So I don't know if we're gonna go through a cycle of that, and music will come back, or we'll find a way to balance both, so.
I think anytime there's choices, right, where there's multiple choices, the more choices we have, right, the more pressure, so I don't know if it's one specific thing, I think it's many things.
And sometimes it's, they say STEM, but they add, they make it STEAM, and they add the A for arts, so maybe we gotta find a way to keep the arts as part of our, you know, everyday thing, 'cause music's everywhere.
I would just kinda echo what Dr. Mo was saying, in terms of offering that K-12 music team togetherness timed, you know, the professional development, it, you know, working in every different building, there's not many departments, I mean, I guess there are other departments, but not many departments where you have people in every single different building, teaching all different grade levels, K-12, and to be able to bring that team together and offer that kind of meaningful professional development, I think is really super important. As the wife of a former music teacher, I know it doesn't happen very often, so I just think that's really important, that the district and you, as the leader, were able to do that, and I thank you for that, and there's a lot of really great, exciting things happening in our music program.
I wanna cry.
Don't cry.
Cheers of joy.
You're right, it's throughout the entire time, the teachers were so engaged, and they were so excited to be working together. What I love is that, yeah, we get to work a lot together once a week with our POCs with elementary, but then to be able to work with the high school and the middle school that we don't see as much, and for even for us to give our opinions, this'll work this way because we know this happens in fifth grade. What if you do this in sixth grade? I mean, there's just a lot of learning that we can help each other.
Well, and just, I mean, you're trying to form musicians, as, you know, Linda was saying, you wanna instill that love of music or the arts, whatever, whichever art it might be, in kids who, at a very young age, and if you are working together, you know, it's that continuum. It's not just, you're gonna do this for these couple of years, this for this couple of years. It's really starting in kindergarten, going all the way to high school, and that's why we see so many of our students who, whether it's gonna be their career, I know a number of kids who are gonna go into music education, or whether they're gonna go be engineers, but hey, they might still wanna be in the band. So, you know, there is that love of music, or whether it's, you know, art or drama, whatever it is, I think it's important that we continue to foster that, so thank you for that work, and I am excited to see it keep growing.
Angie, please.
Thank you for your presentation, it was very informative. I'm just curious, so last year, we heard a lot about this one measure of how successful the music program was, which was student enrollment. And you mentioned that you're also tracking response to new programs that you're doing. I'm curious about two things. Number one, how are our enrollment numbers for next year? And number two, what other things do you sort of track to sort of determine how well you're doing?
So, enrollment numbers, I really can't speak to all of that.
What?
So, but I do know that we, giving those surveys and finding out what the kids are interested in, and how they want to pursue music, that's changed too. And so we're looking at some different options currently that we would be changing or adapting to in the future, depending on student surveys, how we work curriculum. We haven't made any true decisions, but we're experimenting, and that was one of our survey questions, which we'd be interested in, and looking very different than just band, orchestra, choir, general music, with the band, orchestra, choir, and then some more modern ideas of how to be in an ensemble. And we'll find out more as we research and interview it as individually.
Are you gonna keep this model for your gear-up sessions next year?
I think we're going to, I mean, that really depends on.
You're gonna put him on the spot.
We are, we're going to be kicking off the year with a good eight hours together, so that would be really nice, to be able to work on some things that from that point we haven't discussed.
Okay.
We could garage band.
Didn't mean to put you on the spot. Yeah, I did.
What, you know, tagging onto that, you talked about how the middle school students said they didn't feel part of that culture, whereas the high school has more of that culture piece. Is that a developmental, I mean, I know there's no right answer, but like, is there, is that like a developmental thing, you know, a middle schooler just isn't even ready to be part of like that culture, or is it because they have so many different choices, and they, you know, like they have to do something in sixth grade, but then they don't? Like, what are, what are some of the thoughts there, and how do you, how do you capture that culture piece?
Right, so that was something, so we gave the survey, one of the very last weeks of classes that we did, because we wanted the kids to be able to do it in class at that time, so we didn't have to pick me in. So, we made sure that they all ate them time in class, and so then together, as a department, we met the day after kids were, no, the afternoon actually, the afternoon after the kid left. And that was the first time we really had a chance to look at that. So that was just one of the findings we came to, it was like that aha moment, look at what the high school's answering. And it wasn't that the middle school wasn't answering, or saying negative, they just weren't saying that at all. So is that something that we do need to bring a focus in, how we create that culture, and that feeling of belonging, the way we have it at the high school? And that's kind of that comparison, right? What are we doing at the high school that we're not doing at the middle? That might be to tweak developmentally for their age, but that we could thread that in, so once they join choir, they never wanna leave choir, but once they join orchestra, they wanna be part of that music department no matter what, because they feel like they belong there, and it's a place where they can call home and take a break from all the STEM classes.
I just wanna answer, I've, you know, I think kind of the piece that we got stuck on last year is enrollment numbers drive staffing. Enrollment numbers don't always drive the quality of the program. So trying to separate those two, there is a ton of good work that can go on to improve the experience for the kids who are there. Have we seen a rise in enrollment numbers? No, we have not. But I don't, and where we got, enrollment drives staffing for every single position in the district, and that's the hard part of this discussion where we got stuck last year, right? That unfortunately, enrollment drives staffing for every classroom that we staff. I've, in thinking through this, like separating, that doesn't take away from making it the highest quality music program that we can possibly make it for every kid here. So I know those things go together, cousin, I can't pretend that they don't, but I don't think, I think, at least I got a little stuck last year, thinking that was the only way to measure the quality of the program, is how many kids driving, how many staff, to how big it is. I, right? There was a lot of other pieces that I learned in listening to that group, that it's just also about the quality of the program that you create for kids, so I'll leave it at that. So to answer your question, no, we haven't seen the huge, I shouldn't say huge, we haven't seen the rise in numbers that we were hoping to see, but.
But you're following other things.
Correct.
Yeah.
That would be the most, and that's hard to decouple those pieces, but that would be true for CTE, or art, or it's true, it's, it just gets a little bit more difficult when numbers are not driving, or when enrollment is not driving staffing in the right way, right? That's a hard piece to talk about.
Well, and I helped out at the, sorry. I helped out at the instrument fitting, and there were kids there with both parents, you know, I mean, it is necessit, it necessitates parental involvement, you know, renting, making sure you get to the lessons, making sure, you know, 6:30 in the morning, you're jazz. And I think it sort of cycles back to what Angie was saying about, you know, our scores in other areas, you know, if we have engaged kids in music, hopefully it will help them engage in other areas. We've got engaged parents, which hopefully will drive more engagement with their academic aspects, so I just, you know, I'm so grateful to hear about this, 'cause more than one parent has come up to me and said, "Oh, you're gonna be on the board, can you help with music?" And I feel like now, you know, it's trending in a good, great direction, based on everything that you're presenting here. But parental involvement is just inherent in these kids having, participating in music, and I think that can only be a positive thing with the rest of their academic career.
I'm just glad that appears, it appears we're moving forward, and trying to focus on how we can keep the kids engaged that we have, and that will drive numbers eventually, probably, but like you say, the.
Not yet.
The pro, right, but the program being as strong as it can for those that are involved in it, that, you know, that's, that's what we want. We want all our programs to be the best they can for the amount of people there that are in them, so, thank you. I didn't mean to steal the last word, but.
Yeah, you did.
But sometimes I do that. All right, DPI tuition waiver approval, this is an action item. Mrs. Bennen, please.
Sure. So you have the paperwork in your file about a family asking for tuition waiver, this is something we can do per the Department of Public Instruction. You're approving a nine-week waiver, meaning they don't yet live in Franklin, but they have intentions within the next nine weeks to be living here, sorry if I said nine months first. After that nine weeks, they can apply for another nine, so you can get up to 18 weeks. So we're just approving tonight to say, we approve to you to start the school year in Franklin, and that you have intention to be living here within that really ultimately 18-week mark, and if not, then tuition's owed.
And that nine-week is set by state rules?
Correct.
So we're not making anything up?
No, not making it up, it's all, yeah, it's all set by DPI, and numbers are set by DPI, and we've communicated with the family often to understand.
Okay.
You know, that we can't go above the law, and just say, "Sorry, your house isn't done, but come on in." So, and those are conversations we have often, you know, people might have a house up north, and here, and they're like, "Well, we can pick which school." It's like, no, it's where you reside over 50% of the time, so really, right now, you're approving that they can start, the two boys can start school here this year, though they're not yet residing at over 50%, but they're saying they're committed to doing that within this nine or 18 weeks.
And if they wouldn't do that, would we charge them tuition then for the nine or 18 weeks that they were here?
And that's ultimately what would happen.
And what's the rate?
Depending on if a student has special needs or not, it's anywhere from like eight to about just under $11,000.
Wow, okay.
For the year, I should say, so.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All right, motion was made by Mrs. Witkowski, seconded by Mrs. Sapersky. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. CISA I Board Representative, this is an action item as well. So Mrs. Witkowski was going to be the CISA I representative, and she now has some conflicts. So I will volunteer to be the CISA I Board Representative again. I think we need to vote on it.
Correct.
Or at least have consensus that it will be me, if anybody else would like to be, that would be fine, but.
Hearing none.
I'm not expecting a lot, and I'm happy to do it.
I move that we honor Mike Sprague with the position of CISA I Board Representative on behalf of the public schools.
So glad I fought for that position.
You didn't fight that, you didn't have to fight that hard. But Linda will be, Linda will be doing SWSA, as she has in the past, I'll be doing CISA as I have in the past. So, motion was made, does anybody?
I seconded.
Seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. The treasurer's report is available in board docs. Unlikely to be any board liaison reports, although that, those went out, those assignments went out recently, and I don't know if there's any issues or things we need to talk about with those.
Good job.
Good job. Thank you, thank you for.
School and community engagement reports.
Thank you all who represented us at the parade. Good job.
It was good, it was not hot.
Enough candy to the end.
We had enough candy, Darlene, we had enough candy to the end, thank you.
Enough candy, finally.
Excellent candy ordering.
And it was solid choice of candy as well, we got a lot of compliments.
Messing around.
We did our little survey, it was the best.
It was, it was good candy, we had enough.
It's a qualitative survey.
Wait, what, I'm sorry, what?
You were able to remember your student ID numbers to take the survey to determine if the candy was.
Yeah, yes, exactly, exactly.
I've taken so many of those surveys, I have those log kids memorized as well.
In fact, Natalie yelled at me today because something came through where I needed it, and I'm like, "What's your," she's like, "How do you not know it yet?"
It is hard when there's more than one, you kinda have to get going. We, I don't think we've had a meeting since graduation, which was another community event that we all attended, which I thought was excellent.
Well, I want to say I was not attendance, but I did get online.
Did you, Linda?
I did on my phone out in Pennsylvania.
Wow.
It took a little while to get, for it to come on, but once I was on.
That was nice of you to do.
It was good, you could see us all sweating on stage.
Yeah, I didn't zoom in, I guess I could've zoomed in.
Good choice.
Yes, it was, the audio was very good, I could definitely hear all the speeches, which was nice. I have to confess, though, I didn't watch all the graduates go by.
That's the best part, Linda, all that handshaking.
I think that was a good choice, you were on vacation.
Okay, it was good to see that worked so well.
Yeah, I thought, I mean, people love that venue, and I thought graduation was good again.
Absolutely.
Do we have to approve that then, every year?
No, we're in a three-year contract, we already approved this, I thought this was year one.
Anybody else, school and community engagement reports? All right, does anybody have any comments? All right, future agenda items, ad for employment update and profile of a grad, 23-24 policy review schedule, buildings and grounds annual report, master facility study, and summer school report, and I'm looking for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries, thank you, we are adjourned at 7:27.